The clock on the wall is close enough. If anybody else comes in, we'll start over. No, we won't. Anyway, we're gonna start the regular meeting of the Woodland Park Planning Commission for April 27th. And we'll start with orders and roll call.
Thank you. DeVoe?
Here.
Watson?
Here.
Carrick?
Here.
Hartsfield?
Here.
Good?
Here.
Penland?
Here.
Scanlon?
Here.
Schrader?
Here.
And Stannard?
Here.
We have complete attendance this evening.
If you will all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is approval of minutes for March 23rd. Anybody have any changes, recommendations thereof? Okay. If not, we need a motion and second approvals.
Move and approve.
Second?
Polls in favor?
Aye.
Poll sign? Passed. Item four, public hearings. A CUP 17-002 and SPR-17-001, conditional use permit and site plan review to allow automobile wash service use 18.09.090.F.8 for new automated car wash at 235, 255, and 275 East US 24 Woodland Park. Lots 1 through 3, Pike's Peak subdivision in the central business district as requested by Taylor Mountain Enterprises LLC. Property owner and applicant continued from 3/23/17. First thing we're gonna talk about is disclosure of ex parte communications or conflict of interest. And at this point, both Alan and I have a conflict because we approved part of his program on the DDA, okay? If we had not done that, we would've been eligible to be here and be involved with this. But being what it is and bias was created at that, we beg your permission that we be recused from this meeting at this point. Does anybody have an objection? Seeing none.
Yes, so therefore I recuse myself as well.
And I'm Vicki Good, and my husband's on the DDA board, but I have made no decisions, no predetermination.
Okay, we'll start with the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So today is April 27, 2017, and this case for the Red Baron Car Wash was initially opened on March 23, 2017 by this planning commission. Public hearing was held at that time and is continued today. We are having this planning commission meeting as a continuation. Our PowerPoint presentation capabilities are down, so I will be speaking from here, and I will be going over the PowerPoint presentation that I went over on March 23rd. Everyone should have a copy of that. I'm gonna be brief. Nothing really has changed except for the CDOT resolution, and I'll get into that as we go through the PowerPoint presentation. So, so again, today is April 27, 2017. It's the continuation of the March 23 planning commission hearing on the Red Baron Car Wash. It's an application for a conditional use permit site plan review for an automobile wash service use, which is Section 18.09.090.F.8 for a 4,400 square foot car wash to be located on this particular site. A community meeting was held at 7:00 PM on March 15, 2017. Approximately three members of the public did show up and provided input to the applicant and to staff regarding this proposed application. There were not a lot of substantive comments or changes. The applicants or the members that came to that meeting did not object to most of what they saw. Some comments that did emanate from that meeting related to stop signs and how the traffic would flow with this development. Also signage. They were curious about what the signage would look like for this particular car wash. So, the first slide that you see on the handout says that the city council first reading is for April 6. Of course, that's been postponed and rescheduled for May 4, which is next week, and that's for first reading before council. The public hearing has also been rescheduled for May 18 before council. The next slide on page one shows you the general location of this particular facility. It is located in the central area of Woodland Park, just west of US Highway 24 and just north of Pike's Peak Highway. It's that yellow blob. It's on that map, which is a reduced map. The next page, on page two, again, shows a closer up, a bigger scale picture of the location, again, north of Pike's Peak Avenue and west of US 24. Just as you round the curve going south or going east on US 24. And of course, the second slide on page two shows the aerial photo. The lot is composed, the site is composed of three lots in the Pike's Peak subdivision. And the applicant does propose to consolidate those lots depending on how all of this proceeds. It'll either be a consolidation into two lots or one lot. And he has the ability to be flexible. So we would require that, as the conditions in the staff report state, that easements be realigned and this consolidation occur prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Was how we wrote that condition. So on page three, this shows you the zoning, and the site is, again, just north of Pike's Peak Ave. and west of US 24. And it is totally within the central business district, which is the blue shading on this map. It is within, entirely within the downtown development authority boundary, which is that hatched dotted red line that you see in this map. And they have approved, they have received approval for a tax increment finance agreement that the applicant has worked out with the DDA. So the next few images, pages three, four, and five, and six, show you, and seven, and eight, show you various views from the site. Gives you an idea of the topography on the site and some of the vegetation that's there. Also gives you an idea of the impact and the adjacency of US 24. Also the drainage erosion that has occurred on the site. There are some of those images there. And then if you go to page six, it shows you the intersection with US 24 and Pike's Peak Avenue. Some of the infrastructure that has been placed in there already. And then it shows you what exists right now and how it would connect with Pike's Peak Avenue. So those are just general site images. And then on page nine, at the top of page nine, is a thumbnail sketch, which is very difficult to read on the handout, but everybody should've received a copy with their staff report. It is the site plan proposed by this applicant. And the site plan, lots 1, 2, and 3, is the northernmost on the sheet. It's the uppermost rectangle. Then there's a triangular piece of land that's also owned by this applicant, and that contains a single-family residence, which is not part of this development proposal at this time. Just a note, you'll see Pike's Peak Avenue as it carries through. And the applicant is proposing to construct sidewalk on the north side of Pike's Peak Avenue all the way from US 24 to Willow Street. Normally, there would be some sidewalk requirement along the Willow Street right-of-way as well, but what we've done is we've transferred that little bit of sidewalk for that little tiny piece that's adjacent to Willow, and asked him if he wouldn't construct the sidewalk all the way from US 24 to Willow Street, even adjacent to the property that's not subject to this development at this time. And he has agreed to that. So they will be constructing that sidewalk. This site plan gives you the general layout. As you come along Pike's Peak Avenue going west, you will come in through the entrance, and there's a stacking lane for the vehicles as they enter into the car wash facility, get their car washed, and then go around the building, park in the parking spaces that the applicant's provided, and use the vacuum facilities and/or the pet wash, which is in that corner, the southwest, I guess it's the southwest corner of the building. And then you can exit the site. There's a short little driveway exiting right onto Willow Street, and then there's another exit, an alternate exit that'll take you down to Pike's Peak Avenue. This site plan very roughly shows you the lanes that the applicant is proposing on Pike's Peak Avenue. There will be a right turn lane. There'll be a through street that'll take you all the way across US 24 to the other side of Pike's Peak Avenue. And then that lane is also a left turn lane onto US 24 going north or going west. So that gives you just a really quick thumbnail sketch and a layout of the proposed site plan. Below that on page nine is a rendering showing you some of the elevations, all of the elevations for all the four sides. And then, of course, on page 10 is the floor plan. Staff has done a complete review and analysis of this particular application, the site plan review and conditional use. We did refer it out to the Woodland Park Departments, including the Utilities Department, the Public Works Department, the Police Department, Economic Development or Special Projects, and the Building Department, as well as the Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District, IRE, Black Hills, Baja Cable, CDOT, and Century Link. Again, as I mentioned earlier in my presentation, the CDOT referral was what had delayed this application. We have met with CDOT, and I do have written confirmation of their approval. Their only condition is that the applicant apply for and receive approval for a CDOT access permit. The access permit will control all construction within the CDOT right-of-way. And they're also gonna help staff with what they suggest should occur in Pike's Peak Avenue right-of-way as well, which is a city-plated right-of-way. But that really is their only condition. Staff's recommendation already included compliance with any CDOT conditions, and this would be it. This would be the only condition. All other referral responses, such as we received, were included in the packet that was mailed out in March, at the March meeting. And the applicant is addressing all of those comments with revisions to the site plan. And those were either part of staff's recommended changes, that's part of staff's recommendation. So you'll see those listed in staff's recommendation. We did send out notices to everybody within, all properties within 150 feet of this particular site. The site has been posted with posters for today's hearing and for the March hearing and for the city council hearings. And we did publish appropriate notifications in the Pike's Peak Courier as required by the municipal code. This particular site, as I said before, is in the central business district, Section 1823 of the municipal code. Section 1823 is intended for downtown areas of the city with the associated commercial activity to be accessed by pedestrians and the motoring public with high density and design issues related to US 24 highway improvements. This site directly relates to this particular purpose for this CBD zone district. Staff did an analysis of this zone district and the permitted uses. Again, a automobile wash service use is a conditional use, which is why we are here today. The height proposed by the applicant complies with the limitation in the CBD zone, as do the yards and setback requirements, the frontage requirements, the parking requirements, which are quite flexible, do comply with Section 1839, fencing and shrubbery, signage. Again, signage is dealt with via a separate sign permit. Sidewalk, they are constructing the sidewalk and landscaping, they comply with the minimum requirement open space, and they did include a landscaping permit. So staff believes that the proposal does comply with all of the limitations in the zone district. We did an analysis with respect to the conditional use permit standards. The need, public health and welfare, property values, harmonization, city plans, city regulations, traffic, drainage, water, sewer, waste, hazards, architectural design were all looked at and reviewed by staff as part of this analysis. And staff does believe that, subject to compliance with the conditions listed in staff's recommendations, that the applicant does comply with all of these conditional use permit standards. Staff also reviewed this application for the site plan review standards, many of which overlap with the conditional use permit standards. Things like compliance with the city plans, compliance with city regulations like grading, erosion, design, parking, tree retention, lighting, layout, and architectural standards, the traffic impacts, topography, soils, drainage, environmental hazards, and features, water, sewer, wastewater, air quality, fire, safety hazards, and general compatibility of this proposed use. Staff does believe the applicant and the application as proposed does comply with all of these site plan review standards. So to conclude on page 12, the recommendation today is what was in the original staff report with one minor change. And that change is in paragraph number two, "Prior to review by city council and no later than April 12, 2017." So that clause, "And no later than April 12, 2017," is being struck out. That was there just because the original city council hearing was scheduled, and I needed those revised drawings at that time, no later than that time. But truly what we do is, what I've done is I've listed all of the revisions, and number two, A through F, that the site plan needs. And the applicant agrees with all of these revisions and will get me those revised site plans prior to review by city council. So city council will review the revised set after staff approves them, of course. And then the final condition is that prior to the zoning development permit for construction, that the applicant provide the following information. And again, it's listed there, and it deals with, for instance, 3C says "Final approval by CDOT and compliance with their requirements if any." So they will need that access permit approved by CDOT prior to, or they'll have at least applied for it prior to issuance of the zoning development permit. And then we have the subdivision requirements listed as "Prior to a certificate of occupancy for any building," that they do the subdivision. And however they decide they wanna do it, either into one complete lot or two lots, and that they establish all necessary easements pursuant to IRE and city requirements at that time. So that's a brief synopsis of staff's PowerPoint presentation and staff's report, complete with an application. We do recommend approval and review and consideration by city council. The applicant is here with his transportation consultant. If the commission would like to entertain his presentation...
Well, why don't we have the applicant's presentation, and then we'll open it for questions from...
That's all.
Perfect.
My name is Dan Taylor, and I moved here in 2010. We bought the first car wash on, from Jim Ignatius, next to what's now Arby's. And then shortly later in that same year, we bought the car wash that's currently behind Beer Works. And then, let's see, four years ago, three, four years ago, we bought the car wash that's on Red Feather Lane by the Red. And we've been operating those. I operate it, I do most of the work myself. And we raise a family here, we live here. We see this new car wash as, well, just a natural progression of the business, a self-serve car wash. It's something the city needs, I believe. It's a different kind of service from the self-serve. But there is a lot of customers that we have that really don't like the self-serve car wash. A lot of them don't even spend their money here, they go down the hill and use one of the automatic car washes there. Now, the only other choice for something automatic is at the Safeway gas station. Let's see. Anyone else? Oh, there will be. I don't think Laura mentioned, we've planned to have two pet wash stations inside the building. And it's not a very big part of the business, but it's just something that I just felt was needed in the town and could be beneficial and just helped to draw more people into the business. We've also planned that there could possibly be a drive-through coffee kiosk on the property as well. And I'm completely unsure if that will ever happen. But what we've done is kind of incorporated that into the site plan so that if it does ever happen, it'd be simple to do. The traffic study we've done has included the coffee kiosk in it. And so CDOT is aware of all of those numbers. Can I answer any questions?
Yeah, what we'll do is open it up for questions, both of staff and the applicant. Many of you were not here last time, so have at it.
And by the way, the general contractor is here as well, Joe Butler from Hammer's Construction. And this is Robert Kenny, the traffic engineer. Questions?
When this is in operation, what will be the employment?
You know, generally, it's gonna be, it should be five to six people. I don't know if I'll be able to afford that right off the bat. This type of business, it has an interesting phenomenon that it takes about three years for it to really build up to its, I guess, plateau where the business level will be. And that can be more or less, but these first few years, we might have to be running a little bit lean. But I'll have to hire at least two people. There needs to be certainly at least one person there all the time. But myself, probably my wife, will be contributing a lot of the work too, especially in the year. But hopefully, we'll be in that five to six people range where two of those people would be skilled managers.
Anything else?
I've got a question for staff. There was a citizen that had a concern concerning traffic flow and wanted a four-way stop at one of the intersections. And I was wondering if you could add that to, like, a recommendation for city council to allow for a four-way stop for that.
You could. Staff is still reviewing exactly what needs to happen at the Willow and Pike's Peak intersection, whether a four-way stop. Is that what you're thinking, the intersection there? That was what she had raised. Whether it's a yield, whether it's a stop, or whether it's, which flows and which... So we're still reviewing that. So regardless of how we come to a determination, it will have to comply with the municipal standards for that intersection.
So we just don't add stop signs when people request them? They have to be evaluated and determined whether they're warranted.
Okay.
I did have one other correction to Laura's, if I may. Presentation, you said the DDA agreement has been all approved, which it has now. The DDA has made a proposal, and that's where we stand today.
So how does that impact our process?
It doesn't impact our process at all, but it may impact his financing. It may impact the length of time it takes to build and construct.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions. I know there were some comments from staff that would affect the site plan. So there's some changes I'm anticipating on seeing, and we haven't seen that revised site plan yet. Certainly, you guys were working on that. One was a discrepancy in the parking count. And the site plan I have shows 19, and the calculation showed 22. So there's three additional parking spaces that need to be included from the information I received. And I don't know how that would impact the site.
Yeah, there was a miscalculation on the part of the applicant. There was a discrepancy between what he was showing and what he had calculated. Staff is okay with 19 parking spaces and feel that that's adequate and conforms with our requirements. The 22 was an overestimate, or they just forgot to change that number.
So the 22 is a miscalculation based on the city's standards?
I don't know where they came up with 22. They don't need 22 parking spaces.
So required amount is how many per code?
The, let me look it up.
The code only addresses the stacking issue. And so it's up to the applicant to decide how they want to put their parking spaces with the vacuum use, employees, and that sort of thing. So it's not a direct evaluation of certain number of spaces.
There wasn't really a formula, as Sally was told.
Okay, I appreciate the clarification.
And I'm not sure where the 22 and 19 came from, but, you know, there was a long process of trying to get the site plan nailed down. And the parking spaces changed all the time, so...
I can understand that, so I appreciate the clarification on that. The other thing I noticed is that you have the dog wash, which I'm assuming is not only accessed by cars. People can walk up with their dogs and whatever abilities or disabilities they might have. It does not appear that there are any pedestrian access to the building from off-site locations. Unless you're walking on the drive. And again, I got the older site plan, so...
You know, that was another thing that we had a couple of times. We didn't have it right here in the city side. We couldn't cross the city side over right in front of the building, and, you know, then nobody walking in front of...
Yeah, that's right.
The problem is there's traffic coming up here always.
So maybe we just bring the sidewalk up here.
You know, not so long. I remember having it on there. So we could connect to the sidewalk on the Pike's Peak Avenue. I think that would be the, you'd still have to cross. You know, there probably will not be very much traffic. I know I had that on there at point two, and I did think of the same thing, 'cause I would like to provide for pedestrians to walk up.
There was just a discrepancy in the parking space for the handicap. Is that on the north end or the south end of the west side of the building?
It's gonna be on the south side. It'll be on the south side, I agree.
Okay. Appreciate the clarification.
Yeah, there was one, I know over in addition that came through.
Yeah, there were some discrepancies.
For some reason, it ended up on the north side, which didn't make sense.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? I don't see any public out there, so we'll dispense with public comments. And I don't think any rebuttals. I know you think there are rebutts, so if there are no finals questions, I'll be looking for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion for approval on the site plan with the addition of pedestrian access sidewalk to the building from off-site.
And does that motion also include the conditional use permit?
It does not, I think. Is this the order we need to go on, or...
Well, they're both together.
They were written to be approved both together.
The recommendation is to approve the...
Okay, I was interpreting as two separate items. I will revise my motion to include the conditional use permit approval.
You have a second?
Second.
Take a vote?
Yes, thank you. Watson?
Yes.
Hartsfield?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Penland?
Yes.
Scanlon?
Yes.
Schrader?
Yes.
And Stannard?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Seven to...
Okay. Good. I look forward to it. It's a long drive down to A Street.
It's too cold to get out of the car in the winter.
Something definitely needed up here.
Okay.
Thank you.
John?
John and Ellen, you can come back.
You can come out of purgatory now. Join us.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, guys. You get tired of looking at that empty lot now? Okay, the next thing on the agenda is. My checkmate report. Chairman report about, and I think then we go to commissioners. Any of you folks got anything for the good of the order? Okay, and then we turn to Chief of Kitchen and Body Washer. Sally, you always have some.
Yes, I do. First of all, I want to mention that we will have a meeting on May eleventh. We have a small subdivision, minor subdivision plat that will be coming through. So plan on being here May eleventh. It is looking like the end of May. Looks like we may not have a meeting, but we'll keep you posted. On your desk is the Municipal League Magazine as well as the monthly report for March for the Planning Department. And we highlighted the Parade of Homes home that is going to be in the Paradise of Colorado subdivision this year. It is a different builder. Mark McNabb, the M B I contractors, is building this home. Thirty-six hundred square foot, two-level home. So that will be a great addition for August when the Parade of Homes is having. This will be three years in a row that we've had a Parade of Homes here, so that's great.
Are you going to ask them to include an accessory dwelling now?
They haven't planned an accessory dwelling. I'd also like to just hand out to you a little bit of work that I've been doing with the Main Street Committee that is their Design and Historic Preservation Committee. As part of the Division of Local Affairs, Main Street is looking to go from a candidate-level status to a designated status. And one of the requirements in order to get reviewed by D O L A, Division of Local Affairs, to move into a higher category is that they needed to have completed a Historic Resources Report of the Main Street area. So I'm going to start at the back of this report and just highlight for you the list of, there are eighty-five structures within the Main Street boundary. And of that, there are fifty structures that are greater than fifty years old. So that's the first category or criteria for historic structures, that it's at least fifty years old. And then you look at its integrity and its contribution to the historical context of the community. So that spreadsheet is a list of those historic structures and it's color-coded so that we have different levels of study that have occurred for these structures. The gold identified areas are locally landmarked already. And that includes structures like the New Pass Cultural Center and the cabins that are in History Park. Then the blue area, those have had intensive surveys done related to those sites. And an intensive survey describes the architecture and the historical significance of that structure. The green highlighted structures or sites have had a reconnaissance survey done. Those are more simplified, not as detailed as the intensive survey. And then the pink highlighted sites are simply sixty years, fifty years or older. And no surveys have been conducted of those. Then there's a map that has the Main Street area highlighted on it and the corresponding numbers to the spreadsheet. So that gives you a overview of where those structures are located. And it's not unusual to have your older structures in your downtown because that's where it was settled first. So that's, and then the report is a three-page narrative talking about the history, the purpose, the context, specifics of the inventory in which we have seven buildings that have been landmarked. There are nine sites that have had an intensive survey. Eight sites that have been surveyed with a reconnaissance. And then twenty-six buildings that are over fifty years old. And then there's an outline of the benefits for historical resources such as economic benefits, community character and place-making benefits. Educational benefits is the last category. And then we are proposing future opportunities for historic preservation. And there are seven items listed there for future opportunities. So this report will meet the requirement for the Main Street program to be able to request a new status of a designated status. This is only one of three things that they were missing or lacking. They have performed greatly over the last couple of years with all their efforts in the downtown and working to create a really vital area for the community. And they've been recently working on their vision statement. And what I'm handing out now is an invitation to go to a community open house on downtown. It's May tenth, Wednesday, May tenth, at the Country Lodge. And this is going to be a report back to the community and get feedback on their new vision statement. So any questions about the Main Street program or their efforts?
I think one of the reasons that they do that is it makes it eligible for the X level of grants and different things like that.
Yes.
Help the city. That's one of the reasons for that.
This report looks very succinct, very nicely done.
Thank you. It was fun putting it together. Okay, and with that, we don't have any other reports.
I thought you were going to give us a report on all the activity that's going to be going on in Woodland Park this summer.
Well, I didn't bring my list. Yeah, you received a memo, my email last week about the Natural Grocers application. It's a permitted use. So if you'd like to come in and take a look, or anybody from the public is willing to, is able to take a look at the application and make comments, the comment period does end on May eighth, Monday, May eighth. So that's one thing that we can share.
It's going to be a busy summer, isn't it?
It is going to be a busy summer.
A lot of things going on, a lot of things on the hopper.
Yeah, a couple of other projects that you saw conditional uses for was the assisted living facility. We finally have seen their construction drawings. They have not been approved totally through Regional Building Department, but they've got their financing in order and the construction plans are under review, so.
We just haven't seen any construction workers.
No, they leveled the site, built the retaining wall. And then.
Got a port buddy. And they moved a big backhoe in just past.
A little bit.
They did. So they're planning on getting mobilized and starting a foundation as soon as they have their building permit.
Loft House looks like it's coming along?
The Clock Tower condominiums, their building plans have also been submitted to Regional Building Department. So you expect that that will get issued here fairly soon.
Stone Ridge Two?
Stone Ridge, the subdivision out on sixty-seven is looking to, they're installing right now water and sewer lines for their next phase. It'll be about twenty-four, twenty-eight lots and new roads. So you will be seeing a final plat come through the Plaid of Commission in the Stone Ridge next phase.
It shall be a busy summer. And once we get our tax bills, they should all be lower for residential. That's true.
Yeah, so we'll.
The next seven and a half to have to change.
We'll see you in May. Eleven.
No, wait, we're not through yet. She has cookies.
Yeah, for after, when we close the year.
You're jumping the gun, John.
Anybody else? Motion to adjourn?
Someone?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Or adjourned?